It says it's live.
Okay, Rich, can you take the?
So Sarah is going to be doing the opening statement first?
No, you're gonna take the
Yeah, I think
Role.
Okay, welcome to the hearing of April 21st. Rick, I think we're all being recorded live right now, so let's just get started. Rich, can you take the roll call?
Yes, good morning, welcome to the public hearing of New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. Today is April 21st, I will call the roll. Chair Carol.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Hang on, I have to unmute him, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
He's here.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Goldblum, are you unmuting?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lucky.
Here.
Commissioner Shemir Baron.
Here.
Okay, good morning and welcome to the April 21st public hearing, our first virtual public hearing. Conceptually, this hearing will be held via Zoom and will be simultaneously livestreamed on YouTube, our YouTube channel. For the public, your primary way to observe this hearing is through YouTube. It is only when you, or if you want to testify on a specific item that you will join the Zoom meeting. We're going to run the proceedings as we normally do in an at-person public hearing, and that means we will be hearing each item individually with the applicant presenting, presenting the commissioners asking questions. We will be taking public testimony, having some more questions, and then we will be closing the public hearings and beginning a, entering our public meeting to have a discussion about the proposal. And if the commissioners determine the application is appropriate, they will vote on a motion to approve. If changes need to be made, no action will be taken on the application. However, to ensure the greatest transparency in this virtual environment, I will be doing a few extra steps and I will be trying to narrate each step in the process. I will be calling on all commissioners to speak on each item, and I will ask specific commissioners to make motions and seconds so that the record is clear, and we will do a roll call for every single vote. The public can testify by downloading the Zoom app and entering the meeting or by calling in by phone. The public should watch the livestream hearing on YouTube and should not call in until the application they wish to comment on begins. And if you're testifying on more than one item, you will need to rejoin the meeting each time you wish to testify. At the beginning of each application, we will present a slide on YouTube with the call-in information and the password and meeting ID number, and we will return to that slide after the applicant's presentation is complete and when the testimony begins. And we will leave the instructions up throughout the entire period that we're taking testimony. When you call in or enter into the meeting through Zoom, you will be entering a waiting room. Please be sure that your name is spelled correctly so that we can identify you by name as we call people to speak. And you can rename yourself once you've entered the waiting room, so just check your names. Lisa Kersavage, our executive director, will manage the public speakers today and will admit speakers into the meeting at the appropriate time, and she will prompt speakers when they are admitted and it is time to speak. So please begin your testimony by stating your name for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes. And if you run over, we'll ask you to wrap up, and if you don't, we will have to move you out of the meeting. Please note that there is a slight delay between each of these transitions as people are being moved in and out of the waiting room and presentations are being handed over. So please allow a couple of seconds before you begin speaking. Also, please note that this hearing will be transcribed, so everyone should make every effort to speak clearly and not too quickly. And also note that for every virtual hearing we hold, we will enter written testimony into the record if it is submitted by noon on the Monday before the hearing. And we strongly encourage you to submit written testimony by 5:00 PM on Friday before the hearing, if that's possible, so that we have more time to organize that. And we will be sending all testimony received by that time to the commissioners on Friday night. So with that, I will turn it over to Corey Harala, the Director of Preservation, to start our agenda today.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We're going to start today's Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda with item number one, LPC 20-01260, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 2563, Lot 32, 134 Greenpoint Avenue in the Greenpoint Historic District, An Altered Flat House Designed by Klaus Dunkas and Built in 1890. The application is to alter the facade.
And the applicant has entered the meeting. Reminder, please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hi, I'm Adam Jacobowski, I'm the applicant of record for 134 Greenpoint Avenue. I see the time is short, so I'll just get to it. I'm presenting the facade restoration for this project on behalf of the owner, Michael Pyong, who lives in Greenpoint Historic District where the property is located. Mr. Pyong approached me with what I thought is a very simple and clear idea to fix and beautify the dilapidating building facade, which according to him and his neighbors is destroying the character of their neighborhood and the block with its aluminum siding and lack of integrity. Since the landmark district was established in 1992, the structure is falling into disrepair as on the current non-conforming building. No work could be approved at the staff level. The owner has submitted a simple facade renovation proposal previously for caring in 2012, but it was not historically restorative and was not actioned by the committee. We're back now with a completely different proposal that we believe is fully restorative to a character of the historic district, the block, and the building. So we start with a few words about the building prefacing from the description of the district. And it is a four-story framed flat house with commercial ground floor designed by Klaus Dunkas in 1890. Dunkas was a builder who has a number of buildings in the district, both brick and wooden. At the time of establishment of the historic district, the ground floor has already been modernized and the building has been resurfaced with aluminum clad masonite siding, and the windows were already altered to triple base. So in this side-by-side comparison, you can see how much the building has already been altered over the years. The facade was damaged by fire at least once, most likely multiple times, which the original facade was never documented. On the right, you have a historic tax photo from 1940s, which is the earliest photographic evidence in which the building is most likely already altered and lost its original facade, replaced here by the asbestos shingles visible in the photo. There are no records of any kind with the original facade and confirmed by our and landmark staff for our searches. Also, no original facade fragments remain on the structure today as evidenced by the probes we conducted. However, the original details are visible in the photo. If you zoom into the windows and the penetration is different. On the left, you have the original state of the building currently. And here are some additional, two more historic photos that landmark staff helped me find from sewer works in 1954 with close-up details of the window surrounds and storefront. We would like to restore the historic configuration and the details from the photographs where possible. Since there are no photographs of the original facade, we strongly feel it is more suitable to focus on the appropriateness within the surrounding the historic district and even more specifically, the neighboring houses on the block. So our proposal is to alter the structure to create a building that is historically appropriate for the age and within the context that have been to strictly be strictly true to the structure. Within the district, there are many great buildings that are original or restored, mostly masonry and stucco. One of the buildings to point out is 94 Greenpoint Avenue, another building that was originally wood-framed and was lost to fire and subsequently was approved by landmark committee in 2013 and is now rebuilt as new brick building, this building here. So here on the bottom, there is a fire map of the entire block of Greenpoint Avenue. It was originally a mostly brick with only a few exception as it is a white street and even currently, it's a mix of businesses and residential. Today, as you see in the collage above, it's 98% masonry with exception of the small two-story structure on the other end of the block and our building 134 Greenpoint. We propose to complement the block by altering the facade to masonry and restoring the original known details at the corners, window, and storefront surround based on the photographs. One structure to mention which points to historical appropriateness of our approach is 130 Greenpoint Avenue, it's this structure here, which is noted as a wood frame with masonry facing. Unfortunately, the structure did not survive and currently it's an empty void with one-story structure there. On the lower right, you have a photo of the probe showing fire-damaged structure and no historical facade material was remaining on the building. This is the existing facade as it is now and our proposed facade indicating the brick materiality and restored configuration of the window penetrations. The restored details surrounding the windows with crosshairs, corbels, plims, and sills matching the original details from photos. Where we are showing the restored cornice and and restored storefront surround. The storefront itself needs to serve the taste purpose and is optimized for the flow of customers inside the medical practice, so we're not proposing to alter that. And the residential vestibule with glazing where appropriate and possible. The proposed materials are stucco and the face brick, fiberglass, cornice, and window surrounds and metal storefront. We have technical challenges in this facade restoration project. We're not altering the structure or framing, and we need to respect the current property lines. So due to the space and weight constraints, we're proposing to use the face brick, which allows to avoid property and line, property line encroachments and are structurally adequate. The bottom right photos show the proposed brick. This one here is our sample in front of a brick building on the right, to the right of the structure onsite. And this photo here is a mock-up we built for the staff in the landmarks showing the corner of the building. What we're proposing is the structure, is the system that is allows waterproofing insulation and is engineered with mounting brackets and corner units from the outside. The stucco is a traditional freecode system and the window colors are here with as shown as appropriate. This is the site and rare facade existing and current and proposed with stucco replacing the siding and the side brick, we're proposing to full brick widths, lengths, rather, which is 16 inches so that the brick facing reads truthfully. Here is a storefront details, little plan and sections and the elevation of the storefront. The current vestibule has a low ceiling, so we're not proposing to glaze the transit above, although it would be further improvement. There is no certainty if we can raise the ceiling without extensive probes to determine if this, what services are in the planum and whether they can be rerouted. The sign is non-illuminated, metal sign in a painted frame with painted or applied lettering. And here are the window details and dimensions, details of the cornice, the window surrounds, and storefront, and then window details with dimensions, details of the face brick system, the metal panels, and the stucco. I believe our proposal would make the building more fitting and aesthetically pleasing, and I hope that you will agree with our approach and find it appropriate with the context of the Greenpoint Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your very thorough presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant at this time? And I am looking, please raise your hand if you have any questions. Okay, so not seeing any questions, we will now turn to public testimony. And so now for members of the public who wish to testify on this item, if you have not already entered the meeting, you should do so now, and we'll put a slide up with the password information on the YouTube video. Or you can call in by phone, and the number is also on the screen. So with that, I will turn it to Lisa Kersavage to admit the public for testimony.
Okay, thank you, Chair Carol. We have one person that signed up in advance to speak to this item, and that is Kelly Carroll. And I am admitting her right now. Kelly, can you hear me? This is Lisa Kersavage.
Yes, I can. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Kelly. So you've been admitted to testify for 134 Greenpoint Avenue, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Kelly. So you've been admitted to testify for 134 Greenpoint Avenue, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Lisa.
Kelly, I think if you could turn off the YouTube sound.
Okay, hold on.
Kelly is still muted.
Okay. There is a lot of feedback on repeat. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Um, there is a lot of feedback on repeat. Can you guys hear me okay? This is acting up a lot.
Kelly, can you mute the YouTube feed that you're currently watching?
Can you guys hear me okay? This is acting up a lot.
Kelly, can you mute the?
Okay. Okay, let's try it now. So Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. While this proposal would be an improvement over the current facade of 134 Greenpoint, the proposed materials are not appropriate for this building or the Greenpoint Historic District. Greenpoint is well-known for its wood-framed buildings, of which this is demonstrably one. The building was never a masonry building, and as such, brick veneer has no place on it. We strongly recommend that the clamber be returned to this facade. We further recommend that the storefront be examined to create a better sense of design composition between the right and left sides. Currently, it's a bit of a jumble. This facade is a restoration is a praiseworthy endeavor and moving in the right direction. HDC recommends that with more appropriate stylistic choices and a bit higher quality materials, this building will add greatly to the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And Kelly, I'm going to remove you from the meeting then, but you can just rejoin.
Thank you.
Okay, there, nobody else was signed up to speak. We do have people in our waiting room. But
so why don't we call the people in the waiting room and see if they are prepared to speak, and if they're not, they can, we'll ask them to exit.
Okay, and if I could have some help from Edith, if there are people here that are applicants.
There are currently applicants for upcoming items in the waiting room.
Okay, so we'll ask the public again. Please, please do not enter the meeting until the item that you wish to comment on or the item you are presenting is actually being heard at the moment. So for now, we should only have the applicant for 134 Greenpoint Avenue and members of the public who wish to speak on 134 Greenpoint Avenue in the meeting. Everyone else should exit the meeting.
Including applicants for upcoming items, should also not be in the waiting room right now. I will admit somebody named Galaxy S10. Okay, they have not accepted to join the meeting, so I'm going to remove them. Galaxy S10, if you wanted to come in, call in to testify, please call back. The next person that I see in line, Edith, is Chris Gunter, an applicant.
He is for an upcoming item.
Okay. Okay. I think, Edith, I'm going to remove, I think we should remove people for upcoming items so we can see who is here to testify.
Yeah, again, I would like to ask everyone to please exit the meeting unless they are here to speak on 134 Greenpoint Avenue, and that includes applicants for upcoming items.
I could admit Raven. Raven, if you are here to testify, please accept being put in the waiting room or being put in our room, okay? Raven, if, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hello?
Hi, Raven, are you here to testify on 134 Greenpoint Avenue?
No, I'm here for 120 Broadway.
Okay, please join when that item is called. I'm going to remove you now.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I see nobody else in the waiting room to testify, so I think we can move on.
Okay, so Rich, do we have any written testimony or resolution from the community board?
Yes, Brooklyn Community Board One's Landmarks Committee recommend the approval of the project.
Okay, all right, so Mr. Jacobowski or Mr. Payjack, would you like to respond to the comments from the public about the facade materials?
We we looked at the clamber, but we feel that within the context of the block, especially in the historic district where the building is situated, we feel that masonry is more appropriate and more durable, more lasting material that is historically adequate and adequate for the time of construction of the building. And I don't know if this answers the question. I hope that the presentation does.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions at this time? I do have one question, and I apologize if you did cover this already. If the building was historically framed and it's sitting between other masonry facades, when you do the brick veneer, what is the relationship of the plane of that brick veneer to the adjacent masonry facades? Or what will be?
Will it align with them, or will it? It will, it will be in plane with the building on the right, which is right immediately adjacent. The building on the left is adjacent on the ground floor, and that will be a storefront adjacency. And up above, the brick will wrap by two lengths, so so you will, you will see a full width of the typical masonry wall return on a side.
Okay.
But where, where the where the building, where the brick is adjacent with the with the building on a side, it will be in plane.
Okay.
As the, as the current facade is, and we'll remove that and replace it in time.
Okay, we have a couple of more questions. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Jefferson, followed by Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Jefferson, go ahead.
Yes, I have two points. One, if you look at page L2A, the existing conditions, can you show that drawing? Who controls that?
Yes, you may, you may go ahead and go to that slide, Adam.
I'm sorry, it's I'm sorry, it's...
Okay, if you see in the photo 940, you see how the entrance, the lower level, the store level, you see how the entrance is divided into three parts?
Yes.
Okay, then I see that in 2019, they changed the proportion. Now go back to your, 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 your proposal, which is on page L5. Okay, the question I have...
I'm sorry.
L5. You see the arrangement of the composition?
Yes.
It's very, because you have, on the upper level, you have divided into four pieces, the metal piece, the coping, and then the entrance, the proportions are so different. So I'm wondering, why, why did you elect not to go back to the earlier open, which is much more composed, and rather than this opening? What was the reason?
The reason is that the current medical practice is designed around the current configuration of the storefront. The flow of the patients inside is, the reception is directly behind the door here, and there's a waiting room on the side. Have we changed it to the center door? It would not work with the medical practice, and they strongly advised us against it, the current tenant there. We have considered it, it would be more historically fruitful and...
Bland, okay.
It can rely on the future, it might be changed, but currently, this, this doesn't work with the current tenant.
Okay, my questions, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thanks. I have two questions. I must have missed it. I didn't understand that the original building had a wood clavbered front. I just needed confirmation of that. And secondly, I don't understand why you can't use a full brick rather than a face brick.
The, the building, there is no evidence of what it had originally. It's a wood-framed building, so the assumption is that it's a clavber. And to the second point, I'm sorry, what?
Why did you not use a full brick instead of a brick veneer?
The question was, the reason is that we're not replacing, we're not changing the framing of the building, and we need to stay within the property line, we need to make, respect the buildings adjacent. We don't want to come forward like what Carol was asking, and that's why we want to use a thin material which respects that, those requirements.
Okay, so Commissioner Bland, does that answer your question? I think the full brick would then project beyond the adjacent buildings.
I think that's maybe more the issue, it's a physical issue. My understanding is that in order to re-surface the front of a building, you're allowed to go a few inches outside the property line to do that. I just am a little bit worried about face brick, that's all. And if the staff is, if we use it and we've had no problems with it, I can go along with it. But I'm just worried about face brick, that's all.
Yeah, I think that the commission and the staff have historically always had concerns about the quality and appearance and integrity of a brick veneer, so it's a very valid question. Okay, so I see Commissioner Devonshire has a question, so I'm going to recognize him.
Thank you, Sarah. One of the things that I was thinking about is why not go back to the clavbered? And the way that you could go back to the clavbered is using cement board. The way that you would be able to determine what the pattern is, is to take off some of the aluminum siding, which would expose the asphaltic shingles or the asbestos shingles that are there, take some of those off, because you're going to have to remove some of this stuff to do the work anyway. And that would reveal that the, there are either nailers that were attached to the original clavbered, because it's unlikely that they removed the clavbered to do all the subsequent layers of material. So either the original clavbered is there, so you would know the pattern, or the nailing pattern on the sub-sheathing would be there, revealing what the, the clavbered pattern was.
So we have made a probe, and what that revealed was a charred, charred framing. There's no existing sheaving or any kind of facade material. There are no nailing boards, even the framing itself is charred. So we don't think there's any evidence of what that pattern was, and the asphalt shingles were, I believe, not original facade, anyway.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, I think you want to continue that question, so please go ahead.
In 1890, it wouldn't have been asphalt shingles in any case. It would have, it would have been more likely to be clavbered. Are you saying that the aluminum siding is nailed directly to the framing, and there's no sub-sheathing at all?
That's what I'm saying exactly, yes. Sorry, here's the photo of the probe we made. This is the existing framing of the building, and to that, there is, what's nailed to that is current day, modern spacers and plywood. So there is no existing facade material on, on the structure.
Okay, please continue, Commissioner Devonshire.
I would like to know where that, A, where that probe is, and the aluminum siding was attached to a sub-sheathing, not to the framing.
Well, this is the, the sub-sheathing.
Yeah.
What we see up here.
Where was the?
And the probe was taken just above the storefront?
Okay, so it's likely there may have been a fire at the storefront. If you did a probe further up the building, I think you would probably find the original material.
Okay. So I think that that's a very good point. Is there anyone else who has any questions at this time? No, okay, so we will go ahead, and I think not hearing any questions, we'll make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Barron, will you make the motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Holford Smith, will you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all right, let me unmute everybody for the purposes of the vote. Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Commissioners will now move into discussion. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start?
Sure. I think, as, as I mentioned, I think that this building deserves a, at least a nod toward what it looked like originally, which would not have been brick masonry, and I think that could be accomplished by using fiber cement clavbered. Again, I think the pattern could be discovered by doing probes elsewhere on the building. The other thing, I'm, I'm not a great fan of fiberglass moldings, and I think if we could, if the applicant could work with the staff to find another material, then that would be appropriate. The, in any case, if fiberglass is used, it's going to be very important that the sheen of the, of the paint, that they not use a pigment that's in the, in the gel coat, but paint the fiberglass and paint it with a sheen that is duller than what is typically fiberglass, a glossy finish.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move around here. Commissioner Chapin?
I, I agree that in this situation, although I understand the applicant's desire to try to, you know, fit in with the existing block, because they're doing something of really trying to restore this building, I think that trying to go with the original, something that would approximate the original materials is more appropriate in this context. So I agree with Commissioner Devonshire's remarks, and I also just want to make sure that the applicant works with his staff on all the details of the facade, to make sure that they're historically appropriate. And finally, I just want to say that it's, this is a great improvement, and I'm glad that the applicant is moving in this direction on the building.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes. You're on.
I agree with, with the other Commissioners, and I think it's, it's an improvement. I do think the base level needs to be, needs to be looked at and composing it, and recomposed it. Right now, it's very a hazard in its composition and proportion. That's my recommendation.
Okay, great. Commissioner Latifi?
Yes, I agree, actually, with my fellow Commissioners. I do think it is admirable that the applicant wants to bring this building to a place where it harmonizes with the fabric of not only the block, of the block, but it would be wonderful if it, if it really fits in with the fabric of the broader community, which has a lot of clavbered. I also agree that the, the base of the building is not working well. It's just, it seems out of balance, and I feel like from a design and a materiality standpoint, it could be more cohesive.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Barron, Shamir Barron, excuse me.
Well, I think it would be interesting to return to some kind of clavbered. I, I don't know that I'm convinced that I understand what the historic clavbered really looked like, and so I can agree and approve of the brick facade, but I want to recount Commissioner Bland's proposal that it be a full brick, and, and with the idea that it might be, might in fact overlap onto the, the kind of property limit, but I think that that's what it should be. With respect to the ground floor, I'm wondering if they can work on just, if it's not possible to make the front door at the kind of the center of the, of the facade, maybe it's possible to bring the, the bulkhead banding across with some kind of, something, I'm not sure what it would be, onto the door, or to make the door sort of full height or up to the height of the, the other glass panes, so that there's no transom, something that sort of balances it rather than having to have the entry in the center.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Well, I agree with a lot of the previous comments from the Commissioners. I think that it would be more appropriate to bring the building back to what we assume would be the original clavbered finish. And I agree that the, the ground storefront needs to be looked at, improve the proportions. And I think, as Commissioner Shamir Barron said, even working with the configuration of the doors as they are, there's, there's certainly room for improvement on the proportions, and I think they could continue to work on that.
Okay, thank you. And do you have an opinion about the fiberglass cornice and lintels and their proportions or details?
Well, I think the fiberglass for the window surrounds seems problematic, as it's much closer to the, to the street, and you could, you could perceive the, you could perceive the material. So if we are going to propose, to recommend that use a fiber cement clavbered, they could perhaps use a fiber cement material for the trim. The cornice, I think, could be fast, but I think it would be studied to make sure that it is closely replicating the original configuration.
Okay, great.
As Fresh and Devonshire said, the paint is important.
Okay, great. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with a lot of what's been said. For me, the, the facade is a new facade, it's not really a restoration of what was on this building before. And if, we've allowed new facades of historic quality or design style in cases where the facade is, was unknown or was destroyed, it sounds like from what Michael was suggesting that it may not be fully destroyed, there may be evidence of it, so I think it certainly is worthwhile to at least investigate that. I think the other problem is the, you know, if, if it is a new facade, and if a new facade's appropriate, then I don't think a brick facade is the wrong choice. But I think that a thin brick facade is, is the wrong choice, from the point of view of the materiality. We've only, my recollection allowed it in very rare cases, where it was absolutely imperative from a historic point of view to have brick, but it was just physically impossible. Since this is basically a new facade, I don't think that's the case, was it, it's an aesthetic choice that they're making that's going away from the historic evidence, not towards it. So I don't think it's necessarily the case where we should be permitting a, a material that is basically a tile to be used and, and have a more historically appropriate material. I think that in the case of the surrounds, the use of fiberglass for the main cornices is fine, I think, because it's divided up in such a way that it would hide the joints, which is for me the biggest problem with the fiberglass cornices. The surrounds, if you're going to use a masonry language, then the more appropriate material for the surrounds would be precast or a stucco, you know, cementitious material. If, if they're going to do the clapboard, then I think that there's a better argument for using something like sheet metal or, or the party plank, something, something lighter. I personally would also say I'd be interested in seeing if they could find an app, in a visual equivalent to the asbestos shingles. They were there for a fair amount of time. It's a material that I've seen in the neighborhood. It'd be kind of fun to put that back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson? Whoops, where did you go? Somehow you moved, okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
There we go, okay. Let's see, briefly, fiber cement clavbered, fiber cement trim around the windows, fiberglass cornice, a balanced storefront, and I would use the residential entrance as a point of reference for the design of the left side of the storefront. I appreciate that they're driven by the current use, but that doesn't mean that they can't actually use the design elements from that residential entrance for the left side. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
I think going last is that it's all been said, and then some. I believe that either, either of the two, the clavbered or the brick could be appropriate. If it's brick, as had been said, it's got to be a full brick, not a half brick. But I think I favor the, the wood clavbering. It's, it's a convincing argument to me. Can't go along with the idea of asbestos, or asphalt shingle, sorry. Sorry, Michael. And I'll leave it at that. I think it's all been said. I agree with all of the comments about the storefront, et cetera. And I'm sorry, my neighbor has decided to mow his lawn right up next to my house during, during it's raining, so I don't, I can't explain that, but it's noisy, sorry.
That's fine, thank you. And Commissioner Chen, did you want to add anything?
I'm truly lassoed.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so where we are is I think that there's a preference for a restoration to clavoured, since this is a wood frame building in a historic district where, while wood frame buildings are character defining features, while not evident as much on this street, they are throughout the district. But there is some openness to full brick. So what I would suggest is that you will take no action today, and I would suggest that you do a probe in the higher location to try to understand whether there's any evidence of the original clavoured at an upper level, and then come back and, and show us the evidence. And I think that if there is evidence, there will be a strong preference by this commission for clavoured. But if not, I think that, that there's some openness to a brick, but it should be a full brick. And then I think that the cornice, there's support for a fiberglass cornice if it has a dull painted finish, but that the window surrounds should relate to the material chosen. So if, if you propose a clavoured fiber cement board facade, then they should be that same material or, or wood, or perhaps sheet metal. And if you do a full brick facade, they should be a precast material, and the staff can guide you on appropriate materials for either facade material. So continue to work with the staff. The next step would be to do that upper probe and then think about what the right response is and come back to us to a public meeting. Okay, so we'll take no action today, and we'll move to the next item. Corey?
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to item number two. This is LPC 20-04905, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 47, lot 7501, 120 Broadway, the Equitable Building Individual Landmark. Proposed our style office building designed by E.R. Graham and built in 1913 to 15. The application is to modify a display window and to install entrance infill and a barrier free access ramp.
Okay, thank you, Corey. So for the members of the public at this point, the, we should only have the applicants who are here to present 120 Broadway. And if there's any member of the public who would like to speak on 120 Broadway, you should enter the meeting now. The meeting ID and password are on the screen on YouTube, and as is the phone number if you would like to call in. And a couple of things, when you enter the meeting or call in, please mute your YouTube video so that we don't have feedback. And please also remember to enter your name as, by your full name. So I will turn it over to the applicants at this point.
The applicant has joined, and just say your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Edith. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Robert Bianco with PKSB Architects. We are the preservation consultants representing the ground floor tenant at 120 Broadway. We've been working closely with the tenant's design team on their interior and exterior renovations at the building. And there are a couple of representatives, I think there was maybe an issue with access for one, but there are a couple of representatives from Callison RTKL present to answer any programmatic questions that may arise. So let's get started. Okay, 120 Broadway is also known as the Equitable Building, is an individual landmark built in 1915 and occupies the full block bounded by Broadway and Nassau and Cedar and Pine Streets in Lower Manhattan. The building is both a national historic landmark and a New York City individual landmark. It's noted for its distinct Ozart style, but it's mostly deemed historically significant for its sheer size and volume, which in large part led to the New York City zoning resolution, which was adopted the following year in 1916. And here it is in its massive glory, rising 38 stories above sidewalk with no setbacks. And our application is for storefront alterations and barrier free access at the ground floor tenant space of the southwest corner of the building. Historic photos, historic photos of that portion of the building show that the ground floor show windows have all been removed prior to designation. And what exists today are large metal and glass modern windows with a large picture window and single horizontal transom above. And the bank space fronts onto both Broadway and Pine Streets with their main entrance fronting onto Broadway. And the scope of exterior alterations is really limited to just one window bay along Pine Street, where we're proposing to remove an existing window, remove a portion of the granite base, and install a new door and new wheelchair ramp. But this, this work is also being done in conjunction with an interior fit out that is, that has been reviewed and permitted under a separate certificate of no effect permit. And that work includes a little bit of scope that requires some temporary removals of the Broadway facade. So we're including some of that in this presentation, just to clarify the extent of the exterior work. So proposed ground floor showing the new, new secondary entry door and wheelchair ramp on Pine Street, existing revolving door and swing door on Broadway will remain. However, part of the interior work that has been permitted under a certificate of no effect includes partial removal of the mezzanine level, which, which edges on the storefront windows along Broadway. So there will be a larger double height space visible from, from Broadway. And the sign band at the center window will have to be temporarily removed in order to perform some of that structural work. So the existing Broadway facade, the bank space is located directly to the south of the main building entrance. And wraps the corner onto Pine Street, occupying, I think, the first seven window bays on Pine Street. There's also a secondary entrance at the center of Pine Street, secondary building entrance, and a little bit further down toward Nassau, there's an existing secondary tenant entrance for the tenant's space that fronts onto Nassau Street. And we identified that door, which can be seen in the fourth window bay from the right side of the page. We identified that door as a precedent for removal, partial removal of the granite base to allow for secondary access. Proposed elevation at Pine Street, showing the new, new entry door and ADA ramp to accommodate the difference between the first floor and sidewalk level. Existing and proposed partial elevations of the bank space at Broadway. Again, there's really no change to the exterior here, but we wanted to include this to show that what will be visible through the windows will be altered slightly because of the interior work that's being performed. In addition, that, that center sign band and sign will have to be temporarily removed in order to perform some of the structural work required to pull that mezzanine edge five feet away from the facade. Existing and proposed elevations at Pine Street, the existing is at the top of the page, proposed at bottom. At the existing portion, the area hatched in a darker gray is the area of the granite base that will be removed to accommodate the door. And just some further, further details of the enlarged storefront. There'll, there will be a security camera and intercom located at the door jam, a concrete ramp with brushed stainless steel handrail. And we wanted to include this more diagrammatic section, site section, to show that we did look at locating this ramp at the interior. However, there are several impediments to, to allowing for that to happen. Most importantly, there is a subway concourse directly below the sidewalk and directly below the city bank space on the interior is space that belongs to a different tenant. So any structural work required to lower that floor slab would not only impact a separate tenant, but would also impact the MTA tunnel. Existing conditions photo on the left and proposed rendering of the new access door and ramp on the right. We're proposing to match the existing storefront window profile and match the finish color in the dark bronze. And the ramp will be concrete, the handrails will be brushed stainless steel to sort of blend in better with the existing stone facade and not detract from the darker windows. And these are just some further details on the storefront. And I believe that's the end.
Okay, thank you. And we have a couple of questions, so I'm going to start with Commissioner Gustafson, followed by Commissioner Holford Smith. Go ahead, Commissioner.
What's, what's the theory behind not matching the rail to the framing of the, of the storefront?
It, it really was to, to keep those, to keep the storefront windows as their, their own architectural element and not to detract from them. We just felt that the, that the brushed stainless steel would sort of go away in the context of the, of the more warm grayish granite and the concrete sidewalk and ramp. But, but I believe the tenant is open to considering other finishes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I had a question. There's a detail elevation. I'm not sure what sheet it is. It's a few sheets up. Yeah, this, the elevation?
Yep.
Adjacent to the door, it, there's a note that says bronze spandrel panel. And I believe there's granite next to that. Then, and the rendering, though, it looks like it's all granite. And I'm wondering if that could in fact all be granite instead of having the bronze spandrel panel there?
You know what? I believe the rendering may not match what's, what's intended there.
Okay.
Because, because of the plane, because of where the plane of the base sits in relationship to the door, we need that 18 inch pole clearance for, for all the ADA clearances. So, so the plane needs to sit back, but we could discuss different material options there.
Okay. All right. Is that it, Commissioner?
I think you can see, if you look at directly below that in the plan, you can see the edge of that granite base is very proud of where the swinging door is located.
Okay, understood. Do you have a follow up question to that? Anne?
In the plan, there is, there was a diagonal line. I'm not sure what that is. So it looks like the granite is pulled forward? It's a little unclear in the plan.
Oh, a diagonal line from the jam to the?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if Chris has a better understanding of that intention there.
The granite, the granite is pulled forward.
Right. This is Chris Gunter with the architectural firm Callison RTKL. And I see what's causing the confusion, that diagonal line is, I think is erroneous. The stone is much, much more proud of the glass line. And as Robert said, we need to have the door essentially in the same plane as the glass in order to provide ADA access. I think that diagonal line is simply an error. But as Robert said, if, if the desire is to simply have stone where we've indicated that transom panel, we could replace that transom with, with, with stone, but it wouldn't be in the same plane as the stone immediately to the west of it. It could be two different planes, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So it's.
I got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, I, I have a question on symmetry. If you go to your, if you look at the plan and, and go to your final rendering, you see how the entrance is composed around the two pillars in a kind of very elegant way, and the wrap kind of as a separate element, it just stops. What would happen if you took the, the wrap on both sides of the flat area so that it looks like a composition fits within, it becomes a symmetrical composition instead of asymmetrical composition?
I see. I think, I'll have to go back to the proposed plan. There, there is a existing lamp post close by. Yes, you can see that in this proposed plan. So we wanted to maintain as much distance from that as possible to allow for circulation on an already very narrow sidewalk.
But it's just a composition and elevation. So I see many of these, and I wonder why not just compose it with the entrance? Why, why make it asymmetrical with the entrance? Why put another element that doesn't really work well with the existing? You know, it's a question, just a thought.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson. All right, are there any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Lutfi, please go ahead.
Just a quick question about the, the handrail. Do you need a handrail on both sides for accessibility? Or could you just keep the railing on the outside?
I believe it's required on both sides because it's wider than three feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
No, that's correct, Robert.
Thank you.
And it's wider than three feet, I believe, for, for code and egress reasons.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, all right. Not seeing any questions, we will turn to public testimony, and I will turn to Lisa Korsomage to manage that.
Hi, thank you. We didn't have anybody sign up to speak for this item, and I don't see anybody in the waiting room to testify for this item. I believe that there are two applicants in there and no members of the public. But in turn to Rich to see if we've received something from the community board?
Yes, thank you. Manhattan Community Board One recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think I'll just ask the applicant if there's any final comment they'd like to make before we move to our final questions.
Just a big, big thank you to you all for making this virtual public hearing possible. We really appreciate it. And we know the staff has been working diligently to come up with a format that, that works and, and allows for the public to, to interact. And we, we think it's working well. There are a few kinks, but there always are.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, any final questions? Okay, seeing no questions, then I will see if we can close this hearing. So Commissioner Lutfi, if you don't oppose, would you mind making a motion to close the hearing? Okay, Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Okay, so now let me unmute all of you. Hang on. Okay, so all in favor of closing the hearing? Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed, and we're going to move into our public meeting portion of this, our discussion. and we're going to move into our public meeting portion of this, our discussion. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start, since you had the last question?
Sure. I think I understand now why there's that bronze spandrel panel. I think that's probably the best solution, since it's in plain with the glass door. I think that this is fairly sensitively done, pretty minimal intervention. And my really only comment at this point would be that they changed the stainless steel to a bronze railing. I think otherwise it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Lutti, you actually had the last question, so I'll turn to you next. Sorry. Go ahead.
I just completed them, but at least you can hear me.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Holford about this. I think it's understated, it doesn't compete with the, you know, this very handsome building, and I support it.
Okay. And do you have an opinion about the railing, the finish of the railings?
I agree. I think it would be nice for it to be a bronze finish.
So now I'm going to just continue.
I have one more thing to say.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I actually would like to thank the applicant for eliminating some of the signage on the building. It's usually, you know, it doesn't, it's not something, we have to encourage that to happen. So I'm very happy that it was done by the applicant, and I think it adds to the attractiveness and handsomeness of the building.
Okay, thank you. All right, and commissioners, I'm now just going to sort of go down in the order that your names are. So I'll start next with Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson?
He's muted.
All right, where did he go? Because I unmuted him. Are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I agree. It works very well. But I do think, my opinion is that composition, in terms of making it composed with the entrance, would be nicer. But it's acceptable to me, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, excuse me. All right, next we'll go to Commissioner Gustafson.
I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Disagreements.
In agreement? Okay, Commissioner Bland?
In agreement.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
In agreement with previous comments, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
I agree.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Agree.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that I have gotten everybody. And so it seems to me that there is a consensus to approve this application with the modification that they revised the finish to be a bronze appearance that matches the storefronts. And Commissioner Chapin, if you don't disagree, would you go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, I'm going to include the panel that Commissioner Holford Smith referred to, if that's appropriate.
I think she's comfortable. She understood the response and was comfortable with the proposal as presented.
Thank you.
Okay.
In the matter of LPC 2004904, 120 Broadway Equitable Building Individual Landmark, a Bozart-style office building designed by E.R. Graham and built in 1913 to 15. Application is to modify a display window to install entrance info and a barrier-free access ramp. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed ramp will provide barrier-free access into the commercial space in the least intrusive manner possible, without eliminating any significant architectural features of the building, that the installation involves the removal of nonhistoric storefront infill and only a portion of the granite bulkhead at one storefront bay, therefore limiting the removal of original historic fabric, that there is a precedent to the building for installing new entrances at the granite bulkheads and nonoriginal storefronts on Pine and Cedar Streets, that the materials, configuration, details, and finish of the proposed entrance infill will be consistent with a modern ground floor infill installed building-wide, that the materials of the proposed concrete ramp will harmonize with the surrounding sidewalk, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. However, I find that the brushed stainless steel finish of the metal handrails will be inconsistent with the dark bronze finish at the adjacent metal and glass entrance infill and storefront infill building-wide, and that the inner, and that I recommend that the finish of the metal handrails be changed to dark bronze.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and now I'll turn to Rich Stein to take the roll call for the vote.
Thank you. Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen? We can't hear you.
Aye.
Got it, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Okay, 11 in favor and unopposed, so most in carries.
Okay, so thank you. So that item is approved. And thank you all for your participation, and thank you applicants for a clear presentation. So we'll now move to the next item. Corey? The next item is 61 to 63 Crosby Street. Corey, go ahead and read this in.
Yes, and I'd like to ask to pause just for a minute to make sure that the attorney gets into the waiting room to be added on. We have the architect from the applicant team. We're waiting on one more member.
Okay. All right. So why don't we, it's 10:56, so why don't we take a few minutes to break? Commissioners, if you'd like to step away to get a glass of water or something, just turn your video, and you're already muted, but just turn your video off. And then when you come back, turn your video back on.
Okay, and we do have everyone, so right after the break, we'll be ready to start.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
So Chair Carol, I see that we have the majority of our commissioners back. If you'd like, go ahead and get started. I can read it into the record at this point.
Four, five, six. Yeah, I think we do have the majority of the commissioners present. So, yeah, in fact, in just the last second, I think most everyone joined. We're, I think, missing one or two still. But please go ahead and read it into the record.
Great. So the next item is number three. This is LPC 20-04189, "Application for a Modification of Use in Bulk." This is in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 482, Lot 13, 6163 Crosby Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. An Italianate-style store-in loft building with Neogrec style features, designed by W. Drolleman and built in 1873 to 74, and altered by Theodore A. Trivet in 1875. The application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of use in bulk pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution. And just if I could note, the work that shall be shown on the slides today are additional restoration work that the staff is able to approve pursuant to our rules. So that is not actually the work before you. What is before you is, again, the request for the special permit and the modification of use in bulk through the report to the City Planning Commission. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Edith and the applicant.
Okay, and if we can just put the slide up for the public. Right now, this is the moment where the public who is interested in speaking on 61 to 63 Crosby Street should enter the meeting. And in one second, we'll have that slide up with the meeting ID and phone number. Edith, can you put Slide 1 up? Edith?
Just give me one moment, please.
Sure.
There was a screen share issue, one moment.
Okay. Okay, so right now, for the members of the public, if you'd like to testify on this item, you can enter the Zoom meeting now. The meeting ID, again, is seen on the screen as 823-35214741. The password is 890057. Or you can call in by phone to 1646-558-8656. We will also have this screen up after the applicant presents the project. So, and we'll keep it up for the duration of the public testimony. Okay, so please go ahead.
The applicant may begin, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Frank Chaney.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't see myself here, but I assume I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And we do have the presentation before us.
My name is Frank Chaney, and I'm the land use attorney to the owners of 6163 Crosby Street on this application for a 74711 modification of use. Just to be clear, the application's for a modification of use only. There are no modifications of bulk proposed or requested. If you think you've seen this property before, it's because you have. 2017, the commission approved a Certificate of Appropriateness, number 197343, for an extensive exterior restoration of the building facade pursuant to which the following work was performed. The brownstone, including the piers at the ground floor, was completely repaired and recoded. The cast iron columns and girder at the ground floor were stripped to bare metal. Missing mobiles and acanthus leaves were replaced with new cast iron units to match, and all was recoded with zinc-rich primer and finished in Benjamin Moore wrought iron. A new mahogany storefront was fabricated and installed, designed with reference to historic precedents and coated in Benjamin Moore Kendall charcoal. Replacement four-over-four historic wood windows were provided, designed to match the original units and coated to match the storefront. The metal cornice at the roofline was repaired and recoded in the same color as the ground floor cast iron. The facade restoration work has been completed, as shown in Figure 2 on Slide 6 of the presentation. In conjunction with the facade restoration, a one-story rooftop addition was constructed above the existing fourth floor. The building is back before you now because the owner intends to file a 74711 application to the City Planning Commission for a special permit to allow Use Group 6 retail on the ground floor and cellar. Prior to the current owner's purchase of the building in 2016, the ground floor of the northern 63 Crosby side of the building was occupied by grandfathered retail use, and the southern 61 Crosby side was occupied by a joint live work orders for artists. At the time of the Certificate of Appropriateness... At the time of the certificate of appropriateness, it was the owner's intention to obtain a BSA variance to allow retail use on the 61 Crosby ground floor. Where variance was found not to be a viable option, the owners instead determined to seek a 74-711 special permit to allow ground floor retail on both the 61 and 63 sides of the building. As you know, Section 74-711 requires that such an application include a report from the LPC that a program for continuing maintenance has been established, and that the change of use and any restorative work required under the continuing maintenance program serves a preservation purpose. Accordingly, the application now before you requests a modification of use approval to be submitted to City Planning in satisfaction of the 74-711 requirement. In consultation with LPC staff, it was determined that an MOU approval would require more restoration work than had been done under the CFA to bring the building up to a first-class condition. It was therefore determined and agreed to install corner strip moldings on the 18 windows of the building's front facade. Working from the 1940 tax photo shown in Figure 2 of Slide 7, the only documentation of the historic cornice is available. A design was developed which LPC staff determined to be appropriate. It is proposed to cast the cornices out of the same cast stone mix used for the lintel replacement. They will be installed on the facade with no damage to any historic materials and coated with the same mineral color coat to match the balance of the facade. The owner has agreed to a program for continuing maintenance in the form of a restrictive declaration that will be recorded against the property, obligating the owner and all future owners to regularly inspect and report to the LPC as to the building's condition and to maintain it in sound first-class condition. This application was heard before CB2's Landmarks Committee on February 13th, and on February 20th, the full board voted unanimously 41 to nothing to approve. Finally, just to put the current application in context, as I'm sure the commission is aware, last year, the Envision SoHo Study jointly sponsored by City Council member Margaret Chin, Borough President Gail Brewer, and the Department of City Planning, with the participation of Community Board 2 and the Soho Alliance, among others, undertook the study land use and zoning in SoHo and NoHo. And in November, it issued its final report. Among its recommendations, eliminate the prohibition on ground floor retail in M15A and M15B districts and allow such as of right. Now, if there are any questions, either David Greider, the architect, or myself will be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions on this item at this time? Okay, not seeing any hands being raised. I think we can go ahead and turn to public testimony. Lisa?
Okay, thank you. There is one person that signed up to testify for this item, and that is Kelly Carroll, and I believe that I am admitting her now. Pardon me for the... Can you hear me?
Yes, Kelly, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, go ahead and...
Yes.
Just state your name for the record as well.
Okay, this is Kelly Carroll for Historic District Council. Now I have a better understanding of the presentation, but our original testimony is the docket states that this is an application for a modification of use in bulk, an anomaly that our committee could not make heads or tails of since there was no noticeable bulk change. Now we know it's a change of use. So as long as no bulk remains a non-issue in this proposal, HDC finds these changes to be well done and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, there is no one else waiting to speak, correct?
There are nobody else signed up to speak, and there are three people in the waiting room that might... If you are applicants and watching on YouTube and you're in the waiting room, could you please remove yourself? Otherwise, I can see if they're here to testify.
Okay. I guess, yeah, if people are in the waiting room and they do wish to testify on this item, can they raise their hand perhaps, so we can identify them?
I'm not sure that they can raise their hand, but I think we should probably admit. I will admit Michelle now.
Okay.
Michelle, are you here to testify on 61 to 63 Crosby?
I am not. I'm here from CB7 on their items.
Okay, so can you, Michelle, yeah, can you not call in until the CB7 items begin? So just continue to watch on YouTube.
All right, thank you so much. I'll do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm now going to admit, it looks like maybe George James? Or Geo James? Geo James, we've called you from the waiting room? Geo James, I think, going to put back in the rating room. The last person I see that is here is Noel's iPhone. Noel's iPhone, I've called you in from the rating room. You have to accept. Okay, Noel's iPhone, I've unmuted you. If you're here to testify on 61 to 63 Crosby Street, you have three minutes.
Okay, Noel's iPhone, are you speaking on this application 61 to 63 Crosby Street?
You just have to unmute yourself. Noel's iPhone? Okay.
If it's by phone, he should hit star six to unmute, just in case.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I've unmuted him. Okay, I think I'm going to put this person back in the waiting room, and I believe that those are all of the people.
Okay, Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we just had the resolution from Manhattan Community Board 2, as the applicant already stated, was approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Frank, would you like to make any final comments?
The only comment I would like to make, to echo the sentiment of the previous applicant, is to thank the LPC for pulling this together, and I especially want to thank the staff that we've been working with, Garcia Lo, Caroline Kane Levy, and John Weiss, who've been immensely helpful in putting this together. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, are there any final questions for the applicant? All right, so not seeing any hands for questions. I'm going to move ahead with closing the hearing. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Oops, I can't unmute here. So you... Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that?
Second.
Okay, great. And I'm going to unmute everyone so we can vote on this. Okay, can we have a motion to close the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll just start our discussion and I'll go around, but as was stated, the building had done a lot of restoration work under previous approvals and is here seeking a request that we support their application at City Planning for a modification of use to allow retail at the ground floor. That's the only change they're requesting at City Planning. And in addition to the restoration work that's already been completed, they are also restoring the window surrounds, and they have entered into a restrictive declaration that would bind the property to future cyclical, a future cyclical maintenance plan in perpetuity. So are there any... I'm going to start at the top and work my way down. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to address this application?
Yes, I support the work that's being proposed, and I think that a cyclical plan is very important, and so approve.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I think that the proposed work is appropriate, and will bring the building up to a first-class restoration, and the cyclical maintenance will keep it in that condition. Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I support the application.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
Commissioner Chapin?
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
I support the application.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I'm in support.
Commissioner Lutti?
I'm in support. I just want to commend the applicant. They've been here a couple of times in the past couple of years. Everything they do adds to the historic character of the building, so thank you, and I want to wish them luck as they change the use at the ground floor.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Agree.
All right, Commissioner Gustafson, did I get you?
No, but I agree.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the names have moved around, so I believe at this point I have called everybody. So, Rich, it seems we have a consensus to approve. Will you do the roll call?
We need the motion for the roll call?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Lutti, would you make that motion, please?
I'm so moved.
Can you read the motion?
All right, sorry. Okay. Um, in the matter of docket 20-0418961-63 Crosby Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension, I'm not reading the description, correct?
You should read the description.
"Italianate-style store and loft building with neo-grec style features designed by W. Droloman and built in 1873, 1874, and altered by Theodore A. Trivet in 1875. Application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of use in bulk pursuant to Section 74-711 of the zoning resolution. I note that the building's style scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. I recommend approval, finding that the restorative work to be approved at staff level and reviewed under LPC 20-04189, including recreating the missing brownstone window surrounds and cast stone, will restore missing architectural features and return the building closer to its historic appearance. That the implementation of a cyclical maintenance plan will ensure the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition, and that the owners of the designated building have committed themselves to establishing a cyclical maintenance plan that will be legally enforceable by the Landmarks Preservation Commission under the provisions of a restrictive declaration which will bind all heir successors and assigns, and which will be recorded at the New York County Registrar's Office."
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron, will you make the... Will you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Rich, will you go ahead and call the vote now?
Yes, thank you. Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that is approved. Thank you, and good luck to you applicants. We're moving on to the next item. Corey?
Okay, and I believe, once again, we do have one member of the applicant team trying to get back into the waiting room, but we have some of the team, so we're going to go ahead and read the item into the record now.
Okay.
This is item number four, LPC 20-06205, "An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 504, Lot 14, 196 Sixth Avenue in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. A postmodern-style apartment building, originally built as a police station by Nathaniel Bush in 1893, and redesigned by Terrence R. Williams in 1987. The application is to replace the solarium and construct a perdo."
I believe we are still waiting on an applicant. One minute.
Okay, so, and for the members of the public, if you're interested in testifying on this item, you should call in now, and on the screen, we have the Zoom meeting ID and password, and the phone number if you'd like to call in by phone. And this screen will be up again after the presentation is complete when we begin taking testimony, and it will remain up through the duration of the testimony. Do we have...
Hi, guys. This is Neil Schwartz with TMB Architecture. Shannon Bernis, who was supposed to be presenting, is trying to be let back into the meeting issues earlier on to sort of simplify the process for for testimony. So I can... One second. I wasn't...
Neil, I'm able to give you access to the presentation. If you would like to progress the slides and speak, you may do so if you... Or you can wait for the other applicant.
Let me just see if she was able to successfully... I guess, let me... I might as well present to save everyone's time.
That would be great.
Set up for it, so just give me one...
I'm just going to give you access to the screen so that you can flip through the slides.
Okay. Okay. All right. Hi, guys. All right. Okay, so this application is for a replacement of... Sorry. A replacement of a greenhouse structure where in an existing location on the eastern facade of this building. This is an addition that was done in 1987 to the original building and in sort of a postmodern, you know, style, if you want to call it that. And there's a... So we want to replace the greenhouse structure and add add a metal pergola structure on the northeastern terrace with the goal of replacing the structure with sort of a window and greenhouse structure that makes more sense, both from a structural standpoint and from an efficiency standpoint. Existing greenhouses put together with sort of various commercially available parts. It wasn't really a product. It was kind of jerry-rigged together. There's some single, you know, single glaze, some joints just being just having silicone joining them and not proper framing, but when there's heavy rain, it leaks, and we want to make the greenhouse with the sort of consistent, reduce the mullion slightly to both increase the efficiency and... reduce the money slightly to both increase the efficiency and, and reduce the amount of metal glazing, a bit of framing. The new structure would make the, you know, would make the, the northeastern terrace a little, a little bit easier for the clients to use and better for the apartment. And we, we, it's sort of been a minimally visible location. And second, I apologize for this and just.
That's okay. So the, just for the, the purposes of this slide, the building is located facing Sixth Avenue between Prince and Spring in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. And the work is on the back of the building.
Correct, so.
The building, okay.
I apologize. I just keep losing screens. One second.
Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, so soon as I can get mouse control back then. If you look at where the addition is, there's it's on the back. It's visible from sort of Prince Street and Sullivan Street. Uh, no, we'll go through that in a sec.
So maybe if you just advance to the next slide, that might help us.
Yeah, I'm trying to. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Uh, Neil, if you can just put your mouse on the window, and then you can also use the arrow keys is also another option. Yeah. Okay, so there we go. So this is the existing building. See on the left, the sort of tax photo of the original building, and then this sort of unfortunate addition was added later on. Our unit is the penthouse unit, so it's set back from the from the, what's, I guess, the eighth floor. And it's part of this bulk on the top. There's an existing interior renovation, which we have a certificate of no effect for. And the, all the other items here aren't, aren't visible from from the public. So that's, you know, we separated the applications and are trying to get approval for the greenhouse structure over here and the pergola over here. This is a rendering of the the existing greenhouse structure as it is. So the existing structures here, and you have some windows on the side. And we have our existing, you know, existing elevations. It's kind of an aggressive slope and some, some operation over here on the windows, but it's not not as advantageous. It doesn't really open all the way. And a proposed elevation would end up giving us a bit of a, you know, taller window over here. So we would have a six-foot high window, which would help with the silence in the apartment and also match the height of, you know, or close to match the height of the exterior parapet and coke, not parapet, the exterior line of, this is a slope roof here, and we kind of have a wall for a bedroom here. This is then close to match the door. Sorry. Uh, exact exterior elevations for the proposed. This is, you know, taller, taller glazing, and again, the pergola, there's really not much detail to the pergola. We're kind of, it's just a black aluminum extruded aluminum extruded black pergola. Existing greenhouse sections, you can see it's kind of just a single place window that they put in there. There's, we couldn't, you know, measure the exact, you know, what's going on exactly on the exterior. We can get there, but we were looks like everything was kind of just put together. Uh, the proposed window sections are, you know, going to be standard. You know, a more, more of a section with, with better glazing, heat gain coefficients and and more thermal breaks so that we can actually not have, you know, an oven in summer here. Uh, this is the existing front facade, primary facade of the building and from Sixth Avenue. Nothing's visible from there. Also Sixth Avenue and Sixth Avenue, Charlton Street, nothing visible when you come around Prince Street. So here's where you start to see where the pergola is. We, this is the mock-up of the pergola. So we mocked it up. You can see it from the gap between the buildings on Prince Street. And then as you go to Sullivan Street, it's more visible. This is the existing greenhouse here, and the pergola is next to it. Well, the proposed pergola is next to it. This is the mock-up, and that's where it's most visible from. Here's a rendering of what the pergola looked like, you know, rendering of the of the proposed greenhouse. And these are existing photos. This is the interior. We're getting a lot of leaking over here. Every time there's a heavy rain, floors are kind of all swollen because of it. And
Okay.
That's
and the, well, okay.
Ready for this?
Thank you. No, you did a great job presenting. The window height gets a little taller, but does the overall height change? Or does you, do by changing the slope at the top, keep the overall height the same?
We're keeping the overall height the same. The slope changes. We were told by, we were advised by some, some window manufacturers that the aggressive slope was helping to contribute to the leaking. I'm not sure how accurate that is, but we're not proposing the height change at all. It's just changing the slope.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, so I'm not seeing any questions. So we'll move to public testimony. And so again, the slide is up with the meeting ID information and the phone number if you'd like to call in. And just a reminder that when you do enter the meeting to mute your YouTube so that we don't have any feedback during the testimony. Lisa, will you go ahead with the testimony?
Sure. Um, we did not have anybody sign up for this item. Um, and I only see one person in the waiting room. Um, I believe it's somebody that might not be here to testify, but I think we should try one more time.
Okay.
So Geo James, I'm going to admit you. So, Geo James, if you're on YouTube, you need to accept being admitted to the meeting. Okay, I think this person is probably not here to testify. So with that, though, I don't see anybody else here to testify.
Okay, thank you.
To Rich.
Rich, do we have any written testimony or resolution from the community board?
Yes, you have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommending approval for the modifications to the greenhouse, but denial of pergola.
Okay, thank you. All right. Neil, would you like to respond to that comment and maybe talk a little bit about some of the concerns that came up about the pergola and what your response is when you were at the community board?
So, at the hearing, the concerns that came up regarding the pergola over that, there wasn't enough detail on it, and our feeling was that we weren't we weren't as clear as to whether or not they wanted to see more detail about the pergola or just thought that the, you know, flat, sort of square aluminum pergola was, was not something that they that they wanted. What we we, so we didn't have as much detail as they wanted. We have seen, you know, this, I don't know if there are pergolas on neighboring buildings. I know that that's not necessarily precedent, but we have seen similar, you know, we can't see similar pergolas in the neighborhood. And we felt that this was a very minimally visible location. We did initially put a, put proposed pergolas on both the Sixth Avenue Terrace and this terrace, and when we mocked it up, it was very visible. So we removed that from the from the proposal completely, because it just was, it was, you know, way too visible and, and not would, would have, you know, detracted from the neighborhood greatly. And we thought that this pergola was a lot less you know, what was, was a little less true, so I guess.
Okay, and is the metal framing as lightweight and thin as is structurally possible?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Commissioners, are there any final questions? Okay, so not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to go ahead and have us close the hearing. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, will you make a motion to close the hearing?
Removed.
And Commissioner Jefferson, will you second that?
Second it.
Okay, thank you. So the hearing is now closed, and we've moved into our public meeting portion of the meeting to discuss this proposal. So this is again, replacing an existing greenhouse structure with a slightly different configuration and adding a pergola that is seen, these are seen over a secondary facade in the context of other secondary facades and rooftop accretions. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Shamir Baron. What would you like to give us an opinion on this proposal?
Yeah, I, I actually think that it's perfectly reasonable to want to resolve this question of or the condition of the leak, if in fact, the change, the slope is the thing that is necessary, that's fine. I don't think that it's that it in any way isn't, isn't sort of negatively impacts this particular area because it was not, it seems to me designated for listed representative of the designation criteria. So I think it's fine, and I, I would approve this. It seems appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, I agree. I think especially looking at the surrounding context of the other rooftop additions, this seems to blend in, and I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I can approve this. I think in the context of other rooftop accretions, it will not call undue attention to itself.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I approve it.
Commissioner Bland?
Approve.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Agree.
Commissioner? Oops, lost my mine. Commissioner Holford Smith? Did I, oh, I got you already. Sorry, names just moved on me. Commissioner Lutti?
Agree.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Agree.
Commissioner Chen? And Commissioner Devonshire?
Acceptable.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have a consensus to approve. So Rich, will you do the, or sorry, I'm gonna, we have to read the motion. Commissioner Goldblum, will you make this motion? If you don't oppose, okay.
I don't. So regarding one ninety-six Sixth Avenue and Sullivan Thompson Historic District, a postmodern-style apartment building, originally built as a police station by Nathaniel Bush in eighteen ninety-three and redesigned by Terrence R. Williams in nineteen seventy, applications to replace solarium and construct a pergola. I note, the building is not one for which the Sullivan Thompson Historic District designated, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed solarium and pergola will only be visible from public thoroughfares at a distance and from limited vantage points over secondary facades. The proposed pergola will feature an open design with dark-finished metal and will not draw undue attention to itself within the roof scape. The new solarium will match the existing solarium in terms of material and finishing with the Parisian rooftop accretion founded buildings of this size throughout the historic district, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special historic or architectural character of the building or the historic district.
You. Okay, Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. Rich, will you do the vote?
Yes, thank you. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Right with eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that application is approved, and we will move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is item number five, LPC twenty dash zero five six eight five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block eight twenty-nine, lot thirty, eleven fifty-eight Broadway and the Madison Square North Historic District. A building originally built in eighteen eighty to eighty-one and converted to an office building with a new facade in nineteen fifty-nine. The application is to alter a storefront and install signage and an awning.
Okay, thank you, Corey. So again, any members of the public who wish to speak on this application should now call into the meeting. The meeting ID information and the phone number are on the screen right now, if you're watching YouTube. And we will display this slide again after the application has been presented. So we may go ahead now, Edith.
The applicant has now entered the room and stated your name for the record, and you may begin.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tiana Penciado from the ones proposing eleven fifty-eight Broadway in Manhattan. I'm sorry, I don't see the presentation up.
The presentation screen should be visible within your window. If you prefer, I can advance the screens on your behalf.
Uh, sure. Sorry.
You can just click on the screen to regain, to have control of the application.
Sorry, I don't see it for some reason. No, would you mind switching the screen then for me, please, just in order?
Um, I will have staff assist with the application, with the presentation slides. So just give me one moment.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, I think I have control now. I apologize. Okay, once again, my name is Tiana Penciado. Thank you for letting me present. The building that we are working on is actually a corner building. It is the point in the corner of Broadway and West Twenty-seventh Street in Manhattan. So it does have two facades, and the area that we are working on is actually on the West Twenty-seventh Street side. Um, and if you can look in this diagram, this is more or less where we are proposing to work. The next slide is the, this is just some images of the building currently. The view number one is the view of the building on the Broadway side, and view number two is the view of the building on the West Twenty-seventh Street side. And again, this is where we are proposing to work. The building was actually built in eighteen eighty, and I believe in nineteen fifty-nine, it had a complete facade renovation, and unfortunately, most, if not all, of the original features were removed from the building with the exception of the firescape, which you see here. Um, on the, on the first floor of the building, there are different storefronts, as you can see. Um, and the only, actually, the, the one storefront that was filed and approved by landmarks recently was the Chacha Macha, which is, which is actually in the corner, which is, it's visible on the Broadway side here, and also on the West Twenty-seventh Street side here. Um, again, this is just a zoom in of the area we are proposing to work. This is more or less fifteen, fourteen feet wide of storefront. Uh, these are the landmark designation images. As you can see, the facade was already changed. These are the landmark designation images. As you can see, the facade was already changed in 1959 on both sides of Broadway and West 27th. And these are older pictures from, I believe, 1940 around that area. And so as you can see, the now and before pictures, the building is completely different. The facade is completely different. Our storefront is actually on the West 27th Street and would be more or less in this area here. You can see zoomed in in this image here. And this is just, you know, picture of the whole, the whole building. So this is an elevation of what the building is now. Again, we're proposing to change only in this area. There is a noncompliant awning of the deli next door, which we are proposing to remove. And they will be responsible for filing anything new that they would like to do in their storefront. This is just a proposed elevation and context. Again, the existing fire escape is not going to be disturbed in any way. We are not proposing to change it or touch it. And here is just the floor plan as a reference. The space is very small, it's under 400 square feet. And again, the facade itself is about 14 feet wide. This is just a zoom in of what we are proposing to remove again, the noncompliant awning that is next door to it and also remove the dropdown gate and frame. This, the removal of the gate and frame was actually approved under a separate landmark permit. And this is just the overall elevation showing the Chacha Macha, which was, it was approved actually in 2017 by Landmarks. And we were just trying to really, you know, kind of work what we have because we have a very unique situation, you know, it's a landmark build. It's a building in a landmark district. However, because of the renovations, you know, it doesn't have a lot of its historic elements. So we were trying to work with, you know, existing elements of the facade and try to see, you know, how can we accomplish working with what's there and still be within, you know, a landmark guideline. And so one thing that we would really like to do, since this building has different storefronts, we wanted to really frame out our storefront for the store. And one way to do that is this here, where I'm pointing to, is the entrance to the upper floors. And currently now it has a frame that goes, you know, that is around the entrance. These are existing metal panels. And so we tried to work with, we are bringing this frame again here to frame out our storefront. We're keeping the existing window and the existing door in the existing locations. And we are proposing to install an awning, a fabric awning here. And in order to place that awning, because of the restraint of the fire escape, which is right in front, we tried to see, you know, where will be better to place it. And we felt that this would be the ideal location. There is an existing opening here for HVAC, for air conditioner. And so, and it also almost aligns with the frame for Chacha Macha or the money of the metal frame. And so, you know, we placed the awning right at this location and it works great for us because it would hide the opening that's here now. And it also has some reference to the existing facade elements. And this is just a close up, a drawing of the proposed elevation. Again, the metal panels would remain. We are proposing to change it to a silver half dollar by Benjamin Moore, which is kind of, it's a gray color. And the reason why that is, is because in speaking also with the community board, they asked that we take into consideration, you know, that Chacha Macha has more of a silver metal framing. And so, you know, that's the reason, one of, another reason why we chose this color here. This is the frame that would not mimic, but you know, again, take in reference the existing frame that's around the existing entrance to the upper floors. And this is where the awning would be. We did propose a commercial bracket sign, which was approved. It's under the LPC guidelines and was approved under a separate permit. So it was not, it's not part of this application. And this is a very, you know, in order for, this is a very, sort of, not secluded, but you know, there are a lot of distracting, noncompliant, I guess I can say, awnings and signage on that street. And since we have the, you know, the fire escape, which limits us with signage as well. And of course, we want to be sensitive to its landmark, landmark designations. We are proposing to also have the name of the store in metal letters in the front. And so, that's part of it. The next page is really just a section through that awning. Again, we're not protruding more than what we can. We are only about 20 inches from the facade. I just want to clarify that this metal frame here, that I've been talking about, is not this the shape or, it's actually, and if I may go to the next slide. This is what the frame would look like. So it's just, you know, a rectangle to mimic the existing frame around the building entrance. And if I, you will see it on the last page or the, what the page previous to last, that the existing frame now protrudes about an inch and a half and it's exactly six inches wide. And we are proposing to have the same profile. This is just a section of the letters on top of the window. And this is the height. Again, we are within the landmarks suggestions for heights and distances from the facade. And again, this would be metal painted in the color of the store logo, which is like a dark purple. And this is the rendering of what it would look like. Again, this is just the different building facades on the first floor, on the West 27th Street side. It's just a close up of the facade again, showing the frame around this entrance and also, you know, this sort of step that happens throughout the facade of the building. There's a photo of the corner. And this is just so you can have a reference of what the block looks like. This is on the West 27th Street side. And this is on Broadway. This page is really just a reference of the elements that are protruding from the metal panel, from the facade. Over here is where Chacha Macha is and this actually protrudes about four inches. This is the entrance to the upper floors. And this is where we got a reference for the metal frame around our storefront. It has an inch and a half depth and a six inch width, which is exactly what we are proposing. This is the depth of that step that happens throughout the facade of the building. And as you can see here also on view number four is, you know, even the windows, you know, they're sort of applied or protruding from this metal panel. This is the typical step that is actually, I believe, in all the entrances on this side of the building. And that would conclude my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? Okay, and not seeing any hands raised for questions. We'll move to public testimony and we'll put the slide up that has the meeting information. So again, any member of the public who wishes to comment should enter the meeting at this time and we'll keep this slide up. Lisa, do we have anyone signed in to speak?
We do not have anybody that signed up to speak, but we have two people in the waiting room. So we will admit them one at a time.
Okay.
So first, I'm going to admit Kay Carpen. So Kay Carpen, we've welcomed you in. And I am unmuting you now.
I'm actually for the, I'm for the next, thank you, I'm for the next series, the seven, eight and nine, sorry to be early.
Oh, okay, could you just call in when those items start? Okay, please just call in right when those items start. But I'm going to put you back in the waiting room for now. And we are going to try one more time with Geo James. Geo James, I have brought you in from the waiting room. Wondering if you can hear me? Geo James? I don't believe that Geo James is able to, I don't think they're here to testify on this. So I'm going to put Geo James back into the waiting room and with that, that should be everybody.
Yeah, and for Geo James, it would be helpful if you could at least respond when we put you in the waiting room so that we know whether or not you're here to testify on any items. Ideally, you should be calling in when the item you're interested in, interested in speaking in, on, is being presented. Otherwise, you can watch the proceedings on YouTube. But if you do remain in the waiting room, we will call you again because we haven't heard from you about whether you're here to speak or not. Okay. So Rich, are there any written comments or resolution from the community board?
Yes, we have just the CB5, Manhattan CB5 Resolution, the recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, and now I'll turn to the applicant to see if you have any final comments before we wrap up this item.
No, just like to thank you for doing public hearings online. We really do appreciate it. And thanks for Abby and Emma, who were very helpful in getting this, you know, resolved.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any final questions for the applicant? Okay.
Commissioners, if I could just make one comment. The applicants did simplify the profile of the trim element that they're proposing around their storefront area. That was a late change and it's not reflected in the talking points that you were provided earlier. So the trim was revised to be consistent with trim that existed at other openings along the base of the building.
Okay, thank you. All right, so not seeing any hands raised. Going to move to close the hearing. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, will you make a motion to close the hearing?
Removed.
And Commissioner Holford Smith, will you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Devonshire, do you have, would you like to comment on this application?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
No problem with it.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Okay with it. I'd like to recommend that the applicants in the future do a master plan for the retail because it's a little bit of a mismatch.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
It's almost hard to imagine something that could hurt what's already been done to this building. So I think it's an improvement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I approve it. I think it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum? Was that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I agree that it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I think this, you know, unfortunately, this building has been so altered, was altered so heavily prior to designation that there is really no resemblance to its historic appearance and really no real uniformity here except for the facade cladding. But in terms of the storefronts, there's a hodgepodge. So we would definitely encourage the property owner to consider a master plan in the future. But for this application, it seems that we have a consensus to support this given that it's looking to other details on adjacent storefronts or entrance openings and trying to align and at least relate to some of the evident extent features or evident features. So I think that we can go ahead to Rich, sorry, to, we have to make the motion. So Commissioner Gustafson, will you make this motion?
Yeah, in the matter of LPC 20-05685, 1158 Broadway in the Madison Square North Historic District, a building originally built in 1880 to 81 and converted to an office building with a new facade in 1959. Application is to alter a storefront and install signage and an awning. I note that the building is not one for which the Madison Square North Historic District was designated. I recommend approval, noting that the work will not eliminate any significant architectural features that the installation of an applied projecting frame around the storefront will be compatible with other late 20th century alterations at this building, which features modified masonry openings with applied framing, that the proposed gray finish at the existing metal cladding panels will harmonize with other storefronts in the building, that the proposed fixed awning with open sides and loose skirt spanning the two small openings will be in keeping with traditional awnings found throughout the historic district, that the proposed pin mounted letters will be installed at modern metal cladding above the storefront display window and will be well scaled and feature a dark finish that is compatible with the building and that the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the streetscape.
Sarah, if you could unmute yourself and repeat.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Not gonna.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
With 11 in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that is approved. Thank you. Good luck with that application and we'll move to the next item. Corey?
The next item is number six. This is LPC 20-06239. An application for an amendment to the borough of Manhattan, block 1015, lot 29. 1501 Broadway, aka 1493 to 1505 Broadway, 201 to 215 West 43rd Street and 20214 West 44th Street, the Paramount Building Individual Landmark. A French Bozar style setback skyscraper designed by Cornelius Ward Rap and George Leslie Rap who built in 1926 to 27. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 19-21562, establishing a master plan for the future installation of storefronts and signage and also to install a new marquee.
Okay, thank you, Corey. And so any members of the public who would like to comment on this item should enter the meeting at this time and/or call in by phone and we'll have this screen up with the instructions again at the completion of the presentation. All right, so Edith, we may go ahead with the presentation.
And Commissioners, the applicant has joined the meeting and will now begin. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Tony Baldo, senior associate with Tobin Parnes Design.
My name is Tony Baldo, senior associate with Tobin Parnes Design.
Okay, so can you go ahead with the presentation?
Yes. Okay, sorry. Okay, so we're here to talk to you today about 1501 Broadway, the corner of 43rd Street and Broadway. You're looking at a photograph of the building present day. We're here focusing only on the 43rd Street portion of the facade. So left of the center screen, left of the lamppost working west on 43rd Street. We've talked to you about this building many times before, just very quickly. You see vertical blade signs, and as a new billing entry a few years ago, we presented to you, there were two separate CFA's that were issued on the 14th of July 2017. And more importantly, in 2013, when we presented to you for two new marquees that were approved under Certificate of Appropriateness 16-3982 on the 20th of October 2014 for a decorative marquee and a modern retail marquee. Only one marquee was installed, a decorative marquee, and the approval expired in January 2019. So we are seeking reinstatement of the previous approval of the rectilinear retail marquee. Furthermore, we're seeking three points of discussion today. Again, installation of a new modern retail marquee serving a retail tenant. We're seeking amendment and clarification to the previously approved master plan signage, Certificate of Appropriateness 19-21562, which was issued on April 30th, 2018. And we're seeking an amendment to that for 43rd Street only. And also per the master plan, we're seeking modifications and clarifications to propose enlargement in height of four storefront bays to the extreme west of the 43rd Street facade. In this photograph, we see historical imagery, working from the upper left to the lower right. The upper left circa 1927 to the lower right in the early 1960s. First, the upper left is a decorative marquee that we restored, what we mentioned earlier several years ago. It included storefronts below that included transoms. And that's, that's pertinent to our discussion going forward. From west to east in the lower, the photograph in the lower left for the 1960s, we see four rectilinear marquees that were butted against the aforementioned decorative marquee, which is just out of the photograph here to the left. And in the lower right, again, rectilinear marquee, this is the basis of our design inspiration for the marquee in question. It handles retail signage, as you can see, McRice Theater Ticket Office. It spanned from column to column, encroaching on the columns of the storefronts, similar to the signage we're proposing. This next image or rendering that we presented back in 2015, 2014, and again in 2017 shows the two marquees as presented, the decorative marquee on the right and the marquee we're talking about now, the modern looking marquee to the left. And it should be, excuse me, the decorative marquee was installed and we're here to talk again, hence the approval that expired in January of 2019 about the modern looking marquee. Some imagery, photographs, present day, again, the decorative marquee at the new main entry to the building. And we're talking about these four to the left, four bays in question here. Spend a little time on these, they basically go head and hat. Another view here on the left, four bays in question. And a frontal view. The marquee we're proposing would be here at the second bay where the canopy currently resides. And it should be noted, the slope of the sidewalk from the corner at Broadway to the east, right in the photograph, working its way left, it descends. So in theory, the tops of the storefronts are of the same height, so as the sidewalk ascends, they're getting shorter. So these bays also considerably smaller than the bays found elsewhere on Broadway and on 44th Street. They're only nine feet in width, approximately seven foot four inches in height, which compares to the storefronts elsewhere on the building, for example, on Broadway. They're as much as 15 feet in width and some of them start at 11 feet in height. So a bit of a difference. This was just a summary slide, it would be easier if we were presenting to you in person. We'll skip it, everything will be explained as we go forward. So this sheet was taken from the previously approved master plan. The top drawing showed existing conditions. And the lower drawing showed what was proposed and approved in a master plan on the 30th of April 2018. That lower drawing is then on the top of the next slide, which I absolutely skipped. On the upper drawing here, and our proposed facade is on the bottom. We're going to go to the next slide because it's enlarged for clarity, it'll be easier for you to see. But it should be noted, we're seeking clarification, modification of the storefront signage due to existing conditions as well as code required minimum protrusions and head clearances that must be maintained. As I alluded to earlier, with the sidewalk sloping upward, per New York City Building Code, any protrusion greater than four inches from a building cannot be less than 10 feet minimum to the sidewalk. And the same holds true for signage lettering, you must maintain 10 feet in clearance. So when we went back to study these storefronts, we noticed that we were going to be approximately one foot below that for both the horizontal tube rails which support the signage that we'll see shortly, as well as the signage lettering. So that has to be raised. So with the upcoming slides, we do want to say that we have three options. The first will be for a single tenant option showing a marquee with static signage. Option two, again, it would be a two tenant option with a marquee and static signage. And third, a two tenant option, two static signs and no marquee. So that lower drawing here should be enlarged, if I can go forward. There it is. So this is option one. Again, single tenant, marquee at the second bay, a static sign, the horizontal tube rail that we mentioned. So again, ownership is seeking a entertainment retail venue similar to that of Hard Rock, which is at the corner, also found in our building. So we've raised the storefront height to approximately nine foot two inches in height so that it resembles the proportion. Sorry, I had a pop up come on my screen. So it resembles the proportion of storefronts found elsewhere in the building. Again, the marquee is the second bay to the left. The marquee actually is 10 foot clear to the sidewalk as well. It's in alignment with the decorative marquee, which you see to the right, but it just happened to be just over 10 feet clear to the sidewalk. And marquee, in this instance, it will be utilized to convey upcoming venue and event information for the tenant with a need to be changed multiple times throughout the day. And to the right, as we said, static signage mounted on the horizontal tube rails in performance for the approved master plan signage requirements. And like the storefront, as I mentioned, the horizontal tube rails which support the signage have been raised to be clear, that 10 foot clearance that we talked about. And we've also raised the upper tube rail approximately five inches. Per the master plan, the center line of both tube rails should be one foot six, they're now one foot 11. The reason being, as we said, the lower tube rail raising it out of the minimum 10 foot clearance. And the upper tube rail, we've centered it on the flat portion of the existing limestone work table, which surrounds the building on all three facades. Not moving that upper tube rail would have caused structural stability issues with signage because the two rails would be too close together. So we raised it to the center line of the aforementioned limestone work table. Just to the right of the decorative marquee, we do see the two rails and signage. Those are storefronts currently occupied by Hard Rock. Just at the extreme left or extreme right here of the drawing, we would fall foul of that 10 foot rule by approximately four inches. So keeping the top tube rail where it should be, we raise the lower tube rail by four inches. And that's continuous for the rest of the facade. And in both instances, the signage aligns with the underside of that lower tube rail in our case here on the four bays at 10 feet. We're also indicating louvers, as you might see here in the first and third bays. The existing billing systems cannot support existing louvers or added louvers, I should say. And per the master plan, there are existing louver locations elsewhere on the Broadway and 44th Street facade which fall between the top of the storefronts and underside of the water table. Existing locations that can be used. In this instance, when we raise the storefronts behind that area, the structural steel which would create an obstruction, it would be impossible to add louvers if necessary based on what tenant is chosen by ownership. Hence, we're showing the ability to include louvers in the transoms of the storefronts. And we should mention that the signage per the master plan, it's an open faced illuminated signage, LED bulbs exposed or LED tubes resembling vintage neon signage. And also, whereas the master plan indicates, we're allowed to have a five foot tall sign per the proportion of these storefronts and per billing ownership's desire. We're lowering that to three foot six inches in height only for the 44, 43rd Street facade. Now, ownership cannot secure a single tenant. We'll move to the next slide. I skipped two, excuse me. In this slide, everything the same, only we've included an entry for a second tenant. Everything else we've spoken about would be the same. And if they can't secure an entertainment style type of venue or restaurant, then we have again two tenants, if I could go forward here, I'm having issues. Again, two entries, one tenant, second tenant. In this case, remove the marquee, run the tube rails across all four bays and have two separate static signs, one for each tenant. We would like to say and to note the importance of the flexibility of signage in the Times Square area. As we know, the New York City retail market is very competitive at this time and has a high amount of vacancies. So this flexibility of signage in the master plan will allow the owner to be competitive in attracting a diversity of tenants that could occupy the building and benefit the Times Square area. So this flexibility in storefront and signage is needed for the owner to attract and accommodate as many different tenants as possible. So moving ahead very quickly, front and side elevations of the marquee. We should give the material of the marquee, FRP, fiber reinforced plastic, which matches both the adjacent decorative marquee and the Broadway marquee. These drawings resemble what was originally presented back in 2013 as far as size. Basically, the front elevation 15 feet across, the side elevation 10 feet and the height four foot four. They would have LED signage displays on all three faces and LED chaser lighting around the perimeters. Per code, we are allowed to have a marquee in depth that is 11 feet, we're shown 10 feet. Code indicates you must maintain two feet clear from the sidewalk curb to the front face of a marquee to create a sort of hierarchy. Ownership has asked a hierarchy with the adjacent decorative marquee, which is the main building entry. Ownership has asked if we pull the marquee back one foot to 10 feet, so that's what we're showing here. The underside, again, roughly 15 feet across, 10 feet in depth. FRP material, LED chaser lighting and down lighting, bonded bronze finish. Some sections. Side section, again, 10 foot protrusion from the building, three foot clear to the sidewalk. We'll have the hanger rods also in bonded bronze finish mounted the same height as the adjacent decorative marquee. So our proposed rendering in the main billing entry, the decorative marquee, our proposed marquee, the raised tube rails, this tube rail mounted in the water table, the limestone water table as indicated before, the raised storefronts with transoms. Louvers. And just out of view, so I'm seeing all your photographs, but just outside on the right is the size for Hard Rock, again, the lower tube rail raised four inches and the signage. Both signs in alignment with the underside of the lower tube rail. Again, it should be noted, if I do go back one, three foot six inch high signage. And then for our second rendering, showing a frontal view of 43rd Street and the main billing entry, the proposed marquee, the raised storefronts. Now you see here, the signage is less than three foot six inches in height. The reason being, there are companies and their trademark logos and they're bound legally to proportion of that lettering. So there are some instances, if there is a long name, regardless of what the company might be, it might not be three foot six inches in height, it might be smaller as it is here. You could take, for example, on Broadway currently, the Lids signage, Lids, L-I-D-S, four layers, you would be able to obtain a three foot six inch high sign. Here we show the Hard Rock signage and the two rails are raised four inches because the size of the storefront straddling storefront in this instance, straddling the storefront in this instance as well, again, due to the narrowness of the storefront base. Proceeding to the next slide, I skipped. The drawing on the left shows a section from the previously approved master plan. Storefront, five foot high signage that, of course, we're changing. Coming to the middle drawing, storefront, three foot six inch high signage drawn to scale per the 43rd Street conditions. We are clear of the second story windows, so there wouldn't be an obstruction. And we have the 10 foot clearance to sidewalk. The same drawing on the right, only we're showing proposed louvers in the transoms. And that being said, we just showed, just included drawings from the originally approved master plan. As we see 30th of April 2018, the five foot high signage in storefronts. Typical prototype storefront configurations that we have. Of course, the main entries would be prototype B. In instances, it'll only storefront class, prototype A. And other, other sections. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? Any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions at this time. I just have one quick question. When you talked about how you reduce the projection of your marquee to 10 feet, projecting 10 feet from the building facade, is that the only change from the the marquee, that the design of the marquee that the commission originally approved in this certificate of appropriateness for the original marquee?
That is correct.
Okay, so otherwise it matches what was previously approved. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to turn to Lisa to see if we have public testimony.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, great. So no one signed up to speak for this item and no one is in the waiting room to speak.
Rich, do we have written resolutions or community board resolution?
We do have a resolution from Community Board Five in Manhattan. They registered a vote of no objection.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, Tony, are there any final comments you'd like to make before we wrap up this item and move to discussion?
No, no, it was just an honor to be here for this historic, first ever remote presentation. And of course, thanks to Carol Kane Levy and James Jussiello, who helped us many times in the past and have helped us in this instance as well.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, I actually did have one final question for you. The size of your letters, the height of your letters, in addition to the design and style, matches the signs that were approved under the previously approved master plan. But because of the grade change, they get a little bit closer to the top string course and the window sills. And I understand that depending on the font, not all the letters may be three foot six inches, but But did you consider reducing the height slightly to make sure that it doesn't interfere with those second-floor windows, but still gives you presence?
Do I have control of the slides?
Yes.
If we can look forward, I know there's a delay, so please forgive me.
Sure.
Second. Are you seeing the screen change? I'm not.
You can just click on the screen to make it active, and then you can use your arrow keys is the best way.
Control. There we go. Went too far. There's a huge delay. One second, please. I'm almost there. So in the right drawing, the 10-foot clearance, three six inches in height. I mean, there is a gap to the window, and we're not obstructing the sill or the window, so we will be clear of them.
Okay, all right. Okay, anyone else with any last questions? Okay, so now I think we'll move to close the hearing and move into our public meeting portion. Commissioner Chapin, will you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, will you second that?
Seconded.
Okay, great. So we are now in, I'm gonna now unmute everybody so we can formally vote to close the hearing. So here we go. Okay. All in favor of closing the hearing?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay, so our hearing is now closed, and we will start the discussion. And I will start with Commissioner Devonshire.
I find it approvable.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
I agree.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I agree.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree.
Commissioner Gustafson.
I agree.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Approvable.
Commissioner Chapin.
I agree.
And Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree.
Okay, great. So I think, you know, the marquee.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, did I? I'm so sorry, Commissioner Bland. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Bland. And I am sorry for neglecting you. Okay, so it seems that we do have a consensus to approve, as was stated by the applicant, the marquee matches a design that was previously approved by this commission, except that it's shorter in depth, which was in response to the community board. And the signage also matches the previously approved master plan signage, but will be raised in height. And I think that that uniformity will read through, even though the height is slightly different. And I think it won't detract from those windows because there is some space between the window sill and the signage. And I think that if the marquee is not chosen and they have two tenants, that the two signs is still completely consistent with the master plan. So if you don't have any objection, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion? Oh, I think I called on you last time. Let me move to somebody else. Okay, Commissioner Lutfi, will you make this motion?
Sure. In the matter of docket 20-061501 Broadway, AKA 1493-1505 Broadway, 201-215 West 43rd Street, and 200-14 West 43rd.
Sorry, but that was my fault. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. A French Beaux-Arts-style setback skyscraper, designed by Cornelius Ward Rapp and George Leslie Rapp, and built in 1926-27. The application is to amend the Certificate of Appropriateness 19-21562, establishing a master plan for the future installation of storefronts and signage, and to install a marquee. I recommend approval, finding that the four westernmost bays at the 43rd Street facade are shorter than those at the remainder of the building because of the slope in the sidewalk and are narrower as they were historically associated with the service area of this building. Therefore, their enlargement to match the storefronts at other areas of the building will bring uniformity to the building space. That the design materials, configuration, and details of the new storefront infill will match the other storefronts approved under the building's master plan. That the four westernmost bays are visually distinct from the remainder of the 43rd Street facade, which is divided by the new marquee and limestone-clad building entry bay, and thus raising the placement of the signage to the limestone bank course to enable a minimum 10-foot clearance above the sidewalk, and raising the height of the storefronts to include louvers with transoms will not detract from the building. That there is historic precedent for extensive advertising signs on this building and on other buildings in Times Square, and that historically, the West 43rd Street facade had multiple marquees. That the proposed bonded bronze fiberglass marquee with integral LED soffit light fixtures and LED screens with programmable signage will replicate the scale, massing, and details of historic marquees that once existed on this facade, as shown in historic photographs, and is in keeping with the dynamic signage and characteristic of Times Square.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and now I'll turn it to Rich to call the vote.
Sheriff Carol.
I.
Commissioner Bland.
Commissioner Bland.
I, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Chapin.
I.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire.
I.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I.
Commissioner Gustafson.
I.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I.
Okay, with love in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that application is approved, and we will move to the next item now.
Right, the next item is number seven, LPC 19-41013, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1119, Lot 36, Two West 67th Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. A neo-Renaissance-style studio building designed by Rich Amethysus and built in 1919. The application is to replace windows.
The applicants have joined the meeting.
Okay, great. And again.
They maybe, sorry, sure.
Sorry, yes, and any member of the public who would like to comment on this application should join the meeting now. The meeting information is up on the screen, and we will display this screen slide again at the conclusion of the presentation. Okay, so.
And the applicant, you may begin. State your name for the.
Oh, thank you, sir. And good afternoon, commissioners. My name for the record is Angus Heron. Thank you all for your time on hearing this presentation, and I do trust this finds you self and those close to you all well during these times. I work for Revival Sash, and in conjunction with Bright Windows, have consulted and developed the landmark package for the project at Two West 67th Street, Apartment A on Floor 10, proposing new replacement hopes steel windows. Let me just go through the next slide here. Not sure if that's showing up there. Here we go. So the location of the proposed historic replacement is on the Upper West Side in the Central Park West Historic District. The building was erected in 1919 and is an example of neo-Renaissance style building. Formerly a building that housed artists and workshop studios. There are double-height floors present that have since been renovated into residential units. These units, therefore, have been subdivided into different floors, therefore resulting in quite a number of annotations and amendments to the current windows. As you can see on the front facade, there's myriad of different examples where there are introductions of louvers and spandrel glass in the multiple different units on the facade where those subdivisions have arisen. So we previously garnered Community Board Seven approval, and are now presenting in the public hearing the following scope of work. So the application is to replace the fixed picture windows that is spanning the two floors with flanking casements on the two subdivided levels. The idea is to replace directly in situ with what's currently there. The admission of that louver will be replaced with individual panes of that spandrel glass. So the only deviation from what's existing is actually the lowest portion of this system of window assembly of units. And that lower casement is actually not historic. It is an insert steel frame. So there's actually two frames, and we're gonna be eliminating the two corks lines, which I'll show you in further slides. Thus increasing the glazing diminution. And let's have a look at some historic applications there. So that's one photo. It's a little bit hard to kind of garner the idiosyncratic detail of the grids, et cetera. It's a bit of a zoom in there that does show things a little bit better. And then side by side again with what's currently there. Interior shots there on the lower and upper floors. The division obviously in ceiling is the current louver and spandrel glass in that subdivided floor. Here, the view of Window A, which is that lower casement that I was talking about. On the jam side, you'll see it's got inherently those two corks lines. So those two corks lines will be omitted, and the replacement will be one full assembled frame going directly fastened from the frame to the masonry. As stated, the glazing diminution for that lower fixed picture and flanking casements will increase. So although, because it is a direct replacement in situ, same manufacturer being hopes, all of the face dimensions on the elevations will stay the same. All of the vertical and horizontal grids, profile-wise and dimension-wise, will remain the same. So as you can see there, the individual spandrel glass panels, they will be remaining. And then, I'm not sure if there's a photo of it, but detail-wise, you can see existing on the left and proposed on the right. The proposed does omit that louver here and replace with the spandrel glass. And again here, obviously detail-wise, because it is a minute kind of frame deduction from that secondary corks line. It's hard to kind of tell the visible changes there on these current details or elevations rather. Detail-wise, if you do zoom in, obviously, this is the existing. So it's all monolithic glass. The other only deviation from what's existing is the inherent depth of the frame and operable sashes and fixed picture units. And this is obviously to house the new proposed insulated glass. But again, all of the face dimensions and profiles of the grids will remain the same as what's currently in place. There is some other details there at the head sill. And again, the proposed, existing versus proposed. And then, obviously, stipulated through landmark preservation submissions, the glazing diminution, so that again, is actually slightly increasing on the bottom one. So that does conclude the presentation shortly. Just kind of in conclusion, the only real deviations from what is currently in situ is the admission of the louver in replacing with spandrel glass and that fixed picture unit with flanking single casements, increasing in glazing diminution and the admission of that insert frame. And it will be installed from frame into the masonry.
All right, thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? Okay, I am not seeing any hands raised, so I will.
Commissioner Goldblum does have his hand up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that. I didn't see that. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
You're not proposing to restore the historic condition of the lower picture window, which used to be a series of vertically oriented rectangular basements? Is that correct?
Correct, in keeping with obviously the one that's next door. If I can go back, that is in a separate apartment. So keeping continuity on the facade, we're keeping that current design in place.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and I am scrolling through, and I do not see any hands. So now I think we'll turn to public testimony, Lisa.
Okay, so we did not have anybody sign up to testify for this item, but I do see people in the waiting room. I just messaged them that if they are not here to testify for Two West 67, that they leave the waiting room at this time. But with that caveat, I will start to bring people into our room. I'm gonna start with Simeon Bankoff. Okay, Simeon, I've unmuted you. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, Lisa.
I.
Hold on, I'm just making sure that I'm not doubling on the.
And Simeon, you're here for Two West 67th Street to testify?
Whoop.
Oh, you're muted again, Simeon. There.
There we go.
There we go. And Simeon, you're here for Two West 67, I assume? And if you could state your name for the record, and then we have three minutes for you.
Very good.
Oh, no, he muted.
No. Thank you very much. Simeon Bankoff, Executive Director of the Historic District Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
No.
Yes, we can hear you.
Is, you can, okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's clear after examining the historic tax photos provided in this presentation that the installation of the existing picture windows were a later alteration to the building that arguably should have never been done. As such, HTC would suggest the picture windows be sacrificed. We also question whether or not the proposed replacement windows meet the standards of the current energy code with regards to thermally broken monouns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Simeon. I'm putting you back in the waiting room. Okay, so let's see. The next person on the list is Peter's iPad. So Peter's iPad, we have brought you in from the waiting room. Okay, Peter's iPad, we've brought you in. Think you have to hit accept. Peter's iPad, one more time. We've brought you in from the waiting room.
Did you join the meet, join with video, audio, I mean? We can't hear you.
They have, you can't hear me, sir?
No, I can't hear Peter's iPad, but I can see she's speaking.
Hello? Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Hi.
Okay, could you please state your name for the record? And then you have three minutes to testify.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Parker. I am the co-chair of the Preservation Committee at CB7 along with Kate Carpen. I am here to tell you that at full board, this resolution was unanimously approved. Largely in part because they said the work will be done from the interior of the building, of the apartment. Because the subject windows are in disrepair and not, the windows now are not original to the building. And the replacement windows will have a modern energy rating. Which then we resolved is appropriate to the character of the historic district.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Let's see, the next person on the list is Will Edwards. So Will Edwards. Oh, from Landmark West. Will, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Could you please state your name for the record? And then you have three minutes. And also, we can hear, if you could turn off the YouTube sound, so we don't have that reverberation.
Hello. Better?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Sorry about that. Hello, Commissioners, Will Edwards for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee praises the efforts of all applicants to install more energy efficient fenestration in historic buildings. The values that inform environmentally sustainable practices in architecture align with those of the greater architectural preservation community. However, in doing so, it is imperative that the historic integrity of these windows, of these window assemblies is retained. In the case of this full frame replacement at 2W67 Street, an acceptable level of historic accuracy is not. Being retained or aspired toward. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee does not support this application as presented. Landmark West promotes the return to historic window configurations in the case of full frame replacements. Including the 1940 tax photographs from the New York City Municipal Archives in their presentation. This applicant is clearly aware of the historic window configurations at 2W67 Street. Rather than retaining the lowest picture window, which was added after 1940, they feel, or they should feel inclined to return. To the 1919 configuration of four sashes. Additionally, the return to a symmetry of four functional casement windows per bay would be preferable. The confusing and crowded diagrams provided make the functionality of the replacement unclear. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates this application for its efforts to implement environmentally sustainable window treatment. However, we cannot legitimize further deviation from the original fenestration. This application, or this applicant is perpetuating inaction concerning the retention of the lowest picture window despite self-expressed understanding of the historic configuration. We cannot support this application for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Will. I'm putting you back in the waiting room. Okay, the next person on the list is Melissa Birch. Okay, Melissa, we've admitted you from the waiting room. Melissa Birch, oh, I see you. I have unmuted you. Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes, but I am here to testify on 1295 Madison, not on this topic.
Oh, okay. In that case, could you, could you leave the meeting for now and then rejoin when 1295 is called, which I believe will be a little bit later this afternoon?
Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next person on the list is Anne Mason. So Anne Mason, I've brought you in from the waiting room. And am I muting you now? Anne Mason, can you? You need to unmute yourself. Anne Mason, can you hear me? Anne Mason, you just need to hit the unmute button. And it looks like she, Anne Mason, has left the meeting. And we have one more person. This is somebody on the phone with the last three numbers, 227. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead and state your name for the record. Okay.
Hello, person on the phone at 227, can you hear us? Hello, one last time, person on the phone 227, you've been unmuted. Can you hear us?
I think we can move on, Lisa.
Okay, apologies, we're going to put you back in the waiting room. And with that, we have admitted everybody from the waiting room.
Okay, thank you. Rich, are there any written comments?
Yes, we just have, as noted before, the Community Board seven resolution recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to now turn back to Mr. Heron to respond to the public testimony. There were some comments about. Restoring the original configuration or, and I'd like you to respond to that, or whether you had thought about at least. Aligning the major verticals of the windows with the configuration above.
Right, yeah, and thank you very much, everyone, for their comments. With regards to what transpired at the Community Board seven meeting, there was that unanimous decision for approval. Should there have not been that unanimous approval, there may well have been secondary look at things. In terms of keeping continuity with the current system of assembly of units in the neighboring. Unit on the facade that is, you know, complainer. I believe that this is the correct configuration to proceed manufacturing with. On that note of Michelle Parker's, these units are indeed in disrepair and. Current conditions of these units do render a full replacement, which is what is proposed. And all the units that are going to be proposed will indeed get insulated glass and will meet the energy requirements as designed.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions at this point?
Sarah, this is Mark. I think that the CB Chair has just joined.
Okay, so let's, I know we've heard from the Community Board, but let's go back.
Can you double check?
So I just admitted Mark Diller, CB seven Chair. I'm not sure if you're here for this item or next, but I've just admitted you.
Let's just see if we can see the waiting room, hold on.
Mark, he's been admitted from the waiting room. Mark Diller, are you here for this item?
I guess they left, because they're gone.
No, he's here.
Okay, so go ahead, Sarah. Sorry, Lisa, is the chair there?
So Mark, Mark Diller, I've unmuted you. No, I shouldn't be.
Okay. Right.
Can you hear me now, Sarah? Mark?
I can hear you now.
Mark Diller, okay, I've admitted Mark Diller. Oh, and I see him. Mark, were you here to testify for 2W67?
Yes, I was. The testimony of Community Board seven was delivered by Michelle Parker, our co-chair of preservation. So I just have one additional thought, and of course, I stand behind that. I just had one additional.
Could you just say your name for the record, please?
I'm so sorry. You'd think I'd know by now. My name is Mark Diller. I'm the Chair of Community Board seven. Here to support the testimony of Michelle Parker, our co-chair of our Preservation Committee and amplify one particular point. We were aware in our discussions of the historic nature of the previous window configurations and took that into account. However, it is the case that none of the original windows are on, are evident on any facade of this building to the best of our knowledge. And I believe that the, I believe that that was confirmed by the applicant at the hearing as well. To require a reversion to a previous configuration. That would not likely, in our estimation, be replicated at any time in the future. With other applicants and so forth, would take a handsome building and make it into something that was less than it currently is. Less than its current condition. And that was part of our thinking in the appropriateness determination that Michelle shared with you earlier today. Since that has been a topic that was raised, I thought it would be relevant to share that particular part of our deliberation with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, and I'm going to now go back and see if the commissioners have any final questions. So commissioners, if you do have a question, please raise your hand. Okay, so not seeing any hands raised. I am going to move toward closing this hearing. So I'd like to ask Commissioner Holford Smith to make a motion to close the hearing.
So moved?
And Commissioner Gustafson, can you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and can, all right, everybody is unmuted, so let's have a vote on closing the hearing. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed and we'll move into our public meeting portion of this item and our discussion. So I will start with, Mike, I'll go with a reverse order this time. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to comment on this application?
Sure. I think that this building is one that is noted for its windows, to the least. And that whose window design contributes significantly to the overall architectural design of the building. And by that, by that criteria, and I think that our previous standards have been to ask. Individual unit owners to restore the historic conditions wherever possible. I say that with, with some trepidation in light of what Mr. Diller had said, and I take that very seriously. But I think that this, this building, I mean, windows are so important to the design of the building. And if we can, if we can strike a blow for restoration, even if that restoration will take place over an extended period of time, I think we're doing the right thing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
In this case, I actually agree with Commissioner Goldblum. Looking at, I just happened to see a picture online of the building with, you know, which appeared to have the original fenestration. And it really does look much more suitable. So I'm actually in favor of going with the original window configuration as opposed to the picture window.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
This is a tough one. It's, it is obviously clear that this building is, is what it is because of these windows and. And they're so significant. On some level, though, the fact that they are, their, their overscaled configuration continues to read. Despite the fact that there's a picture window and has been for the last 60 years, makes me think that they can, that it can withstand. Not being returned to a, to a multi-pane configuration. So I think I would approve what is being proposed here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree with the first two commissioners. I think that the windows are the most important feature of the building. And the, these large windows have a very strong division into thirds that the picture window negates. And so I think it's very important to bring it back to the original configuration of the multi-pane.
Okay, and just to follow up on that thought. If they were to do the tripartite configuration but not return multi-lights. That would not satisfy you. Still feel the multi-lights are important to return. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, context is everything. I agree with the commissioners who pointed out that. This building is really all about the windows. So in this case, you know, the picture window eliminates the, one of the major significant features, so I would go back to the original configuration.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with Goldblum. Go back to the original configuration.
Okay, and Commissioner Lepfi?
I agree. Original configuration.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I'll strike a vote for the minority opinion here and think that the. Well, I want to also say that when Mark comes and makes such a convincing and holistic case for. The Community Board seven presentation, I listen carefully and I can accept that as their realistic. Current approach. I like Addy's comment too, that the powerful rest of the window is so powerful that it certainly allows, in my judgment, allows. The elimination of these muttons or mullions in this case. And I could accept it as it was presented, but I think that's now a minority position.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I agree with Commissioner Bland and the Community Board.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire?
Original configuration is the start preservation approach.
Okay, thank you. And, and I actually. Okay, thank you. And I actually sort of fall somewhere in between. I think that because these windows, this building is very important and its windows are a signifier of its, of it being a studio building. And so these studio windows are very important. But I think because there are so many alterations and that it's at the lower portion of the window, one could restore the tripartite configuration without the multi-lights. But again, we are in those who are not necessarily requiring the return of the original configuration. We're in the minority. And we have seven Commissioners who would not approve it, as is, and would, I believe, approve it with the modification that the window opening, windows at the base of the building restore the original multi-light and tripartite configuration, but would otherwise approve the change to aluminum and the spandrel glass. So I think with that, I will ask Michael Goldblum to read that motion. If you don't oppose, I think that was your opinion.
Righty, one second. Okay, regarding 2 West 67th Street at West Side Central Park West Historic District, Neo-Renaissance style studio built in something rich and luxurious, built in 1919, applications to replace the windows.
Hey, Michael, Michael, this is Mark. Can you speak more slowly and closer to the mic, please?
Sure, how's that?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, I start again?
No, just start from there.
Okay. I note, the building's scale, style, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of West Side Central Park West and Central Park Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed steel multi-light window assembly featuring saw, fixed operable windows, clear and spandrel glass will closely match historic double height window assemblies in terms of operation, materials, details and finish. And that the proposed work will support the special architectural and historic character of the building and Upper West Side Central Park Historic District. However, I recommend that the lower portion of the window assembly be revised to match the historic configuration with multiple basements and fixed lights.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Nay.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Nay.
Okay, with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor and two opposed in comparison.
Okay, so it's approved with modifications, allowing the replacement with the new windows that will modify the details slightly in the spandrel glass, but will restore the original configuration. So thank you. And Corey, I think that we are going to shift the schedule. Is that right?
Correct. We'll move items eight, 120 West 74th Street, and nine, 244 Riverside Drive to after the lunch break today. So there'll be three items to go after lunch. The last of which is 1295 Madison.
All right, so Commissioners, we will take, and the public will take brief lunch break and will return at 1:45. And we'll begin where we left off. Okay, so I think we should just turn our video and our audio off, but not exit the meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll do that and meet you back at 1:45. Thank you, and thank you to the public that's been waiting. We appreciate your patience as we navigate this new virtual setting.
Sarah, I'm sorry, I hit pause before, just before you said that.
Okay. All right.
I don't think she has to repeat it. It's okay.
Okay. So we're not on, we're paused recording. My screen changed and I don't know, I don't necessarily mind it, but it's thrown me off a little bit. So somewhere in the middle of that last item, everything went away except for Mark's name. And then I tried to click back on the presentation.